All right, again, welcome to our Serving in God's Mission series. Again, this kind of has two parts to it. The first is the Bible study part, which we'll be doing from now until pretty much the end of the year. And then, in the new year, we are going to be doing the workshop part of that. And elders and I are still kind of working out the details of what that's going to look like. But it's really going to lead to helping us to determine how you, how God has uniquely gifted us as individuals, but also as a congregation, to serve here in the community of Deschler, and how God wants to use us to bring the message of the gospel to people. And so these next session, next Bible study sessions are going to help us to, to understand that. So what I'm going to be do, what, how we're going to do this in our sessions. Again, the devotion, the, the study printed out part, I'm just going to read through. And then, on the backside, there will be questions, all right? And so there'll be time at your small group tables to discuss the questions. And then we'll come back for some large group discussion. Okay, so that's kind of how the format is going to go. Let's begin with a word of prayer, all right? Let's pray. Lord God, Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your goodness to us. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. And Lord, today, we thank you for the gift of our congregation here at St. Peter. Lord, you have, thank you for every single person who's a member, people who are visiting. We just thank you for them, for the gifts and talents that you have uniquely created in them. And Lord, today, as we begin this series, help us to see, Lord, how you have uniquely placed St. Peter Lutheran Church in the community of Deschler, and the call that you have for us, to love others and to bring the gospel of Jesus to people in our lives. So bless us as we go throughout this series, as we study, and as we just see your plan for us. Give us wisdom. All this, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, so again, I'm just going to read through this. So just follow along on our, our front page here. It says introduction at the top. So the Bible is not a how-to manual for strategic planning. While the Bible is not a manual on strategic planning, it does speak to some of the same issues that strategic planning addresses. Both the Bible and strategic planning deal with topics like understanding God's purpose for our congregation, making good use of the gifts that the Lord has entrusted to us, and working together to accomplish God's mission for our congregation. This study is meant to help you see how strategic planning can be a useful tool for planning and implementing a faithful response to the Lord's call to carry out His mission through the work of our congregation. It draws on God's Word and His gifts, but it doesn't try to make the Bible into a strategic planning handbook. The Bible is not a how-to manual for strategic planning. It's so much more than that. It's God's work of life and salvation. So session number one, the focus is on God has a purpose for you. Robert Byrne, who was an American author, wrote, "The purpose of life is a life of purpose." If you think about this quote from Robert Byrne about purpose, it doesn't make much sense. It sounds like circular reasoning, and it is. If the purpose of life is a life of purpose, then what is a life of purpose? Does any purpose fulfill the purpose of life? Or are there some that do and some that fall short? And if not just any purpose will do, how can we know which purposes are meaningful and which purposes are meaningless? These questions are important because people want to know what their life, to know that their lives have purpose. We live in an era in which the main view of our lives is that we come from nothing and we go to nothing. With that view of life, it's hard to find purpose in anything. But that isn't how God's Word describes our lives. God has given us a purpose. We start with these verses, Psalm 138, verse eight. It says, "The Lord will fulfill His purpose for me. Your steadfast love, O Lord, endures forever. Do not forsake the work of your hands." Proverbs 16, verse four. "The Lord has made everything for its purpose, even the wicked, for the day of trouble." We turn to the backside. What is true for us as individuals is also true for us as a congregation. Just as it is good for us to know as individuals that we have a purpose for our lives, we need to understand that God has a purpose for our congregation. Both knowing that God has a purpose for us and knowing what God's purpose for us is are two different things. As we seek to understand God's purpose for us, we do well to remember Proverbs 19, verse 21. "Many are the plans in the mind of a man, but it is the purpose of the Lord that will stand." All right, I want you to take some time now in your small group tables to begin walking through questions one, A through D. I'm going to give you just a few minutes for each question. So start, and then I'll say, hey, head on to letter B, all right? I know you may not finish, but I want to start working through these questions. So in your small group, break, start with one, A, go. You have a question, just let me know. Right, if you haven't gone to letter B yet, you can go on to letter B. The verses are on the front part, those are the ones we read. Go to letter B, they're the verses from the front side, so. Can you move on to letter C if you're, you're done? Right, you want to go to letter D? I take about one more minute to kind of wrap up your conversation. All right, we're going to wrap up your conversations. All right, want to just spend a little bit of time in a large group discussion now as we kind of walk through these questions. So one, A, what's the source of the worldview that we come from nothing and we go to nothing? Yes?
Divine intervention.
Okay.
For understanding us.
Okay, explain that, please.
Well, we are born to this world wanting to know where we come from and why this stuff is the way it is. And scientists, they do what they want to do. This group of God exists, and people want to defy it by saying this, this, and that. So we want to understand life and why it is where it is.
Okay. Anybody else? Huh?
Colleges.
Okay, colleges, how do you, would you like to explain that for us?
They just try to denounce God and creation and the worldview
Okay.
of secular beliefs.
Okay. Yeah, we might take this question a little bit of a different way, all right? Maybe we're, we're looking at it a little, little differently, which is, which is fine. I, I think it's easy for us as Christians, like, we come from nothing, we automatically jump, oh yeah, God created us out of nothing. But that's not really what the phrase is, I think, maybe talking about. We come from nothing, we go to nothing. Is that really true, that we go to nothing? No. That we do go on. I mean, we didn't come from nothing, who did we come from? From God. God originated us, I mean, God created us. And so, I think the source, some of what you said, Joe, I mean, we, we obviously, to go along with that, things like evolution, all right? That we, you know, just evolved and really have no purpose then. And also not wanting to acknowledge God. I think there's some of that going on as well, if you read Romans one, all right? Just a denial of God, and Paul talking about that, that. You know, phrases, live for now, seize the day, you know, those kinds of things. Like, oh, we just, we live, we die, we're done, all right? Not how God describes our life, all right, on this earth. Anybody else? Letter A, thoughts? Okay, let's go on to B. All right, Proverbs 16, verse four, and Psalm 138, verse eight. How do those verses contradict the idea that we come from nothing?
It says there that we are the work of His hands.
Okay, we're the work of His hands, okay?
The Lord made everything.
Lord made everything. So did we come from nothing? No. The Lord is the source of life, right? Both those verses talk about God being the source of life, the source of purpose. We didn't just poof, come out of thin air. God had a purpose for us and continues to have a purpose. He's the source of life. He is the creator of all life. Anybody else? Letter B, any thoughts, comments?
He has a plan for us.
He has a plan for us. Okay, yeah, before we were born, right? Jeremiah, okay, we think Jeremiah one. Before I knew you, all right, before I formed you in the womb, I knew you. A purpose and a plan for you, to be a prophet to the nations. Believe before God formed us and created us, he knew us, formed us with a purpose. All right, letter C. How does Proverbs 16, verse four, show us that our lives have a purpose and that our congregation has a purpose? Yeah, Derek?
God gives us a calling to help people or situations or events that we play off as is nothing but the dark connection or a road that makes no sense.
Okay, sure. Look at kind of the middle of that first line. The Lord has made what?
Everything.
Everything, okay? Everything for its purpose. Does everything include our lives? Yeah. Does everything include our congregation? Yeah. So the Lord has worked, created everything with a purpose. I mean, Jesus established His church, and our congregation is part of that, you know, greater church, with a purpose, to reach out, to make disciples of all nations, to bring the gospel to people.
It says, "Even the wicked for the day of trouble."
Yeah.
So.
Purpose in everything.
All right.
Well, I mean.
I know where you are.
I mean, it, it does go to the reality of God's sovereignty, all right? That God knows the righteous from the wicked, and, you know, the reality is, even God creating hell with a purpose. Okay?
I could go to, was that free will?
Huh?
Free will?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, all right? Yeah, I mean, God gives these gifts, and we can say, no, God, I, no, thank you, all right? Will not be a fun eternity for you, for, for anyone who rejects Christ and His work for them. But again, God created everything, including, you know, including hell with a purpose. The place where Satan and the demons are going, and everyone who rejects Christ as Savior are going to spend eternity. So, but everything includes our lives, and everything includes our congregation with a purpose. All right, finally, letter D. What warning is found in Proverbs 19, 21? What is the warning there in that verse?
We shouldn't rely on our own, own plans?
Okay. Don't rely on your own plans, don't try to do it on your own. Why is this a necessary warning?
We forget about God, we forget about God's glory.
Okay, forget about God's glory, what else?
Lose track on the purpose that He made us for.
Okay, lose track of that purpose? What else? What is the last part of verse 21 say?
The purpose of the Lord will stand.
It is the purpose of the Lord that will stand, okay? So if we are trying to do it on our own, are our plans going to stand? No. If it's our plans and not the Lord's plans, they're going to fall, they're going to fail. And this is really trying to help us to think as we begin today, this process of this study and beginning our minds and our hearts, all right, of strategic planning and how we're going to reach out, and how God has uniquely gifted us as individuals and our congregation. If these plans are our plans, they're going to fall. But if we, in our planning and our strategic planning, if we are constantly praying, we are constantly seeking the Lord and His Word, we are constantly having conversations with one another. See, God works through, through His people, through our conversations with one another. If we are constantly looking to the Lord, they will stand. And so that is the encouragement for all of us as we begin this process, that it would not be our plans, it would be the Lord's plans, whatever those are. And we're going to, over these next months, all right? We're going to be trying to discover and pray and seek the Lord and His Word and talk with one another. What do we see that the, that the Lord's plans are for us as our congregation in going and making disciples? Any final thoughts or comments today?
Going back to one, C.
One, C, yeah, sure. He did not create the wicked. I think if we look, again, we go back to the very beginning, God made Adam and Eve perfect. And when they fell into sin, that brought sin into the world. The, from the moment of conception, surely I was sinful from birth, sinful from the time my mother conceived me. It is a consequence and a result of sin, but not how God has made or created them. Yeah, Ronald?
Does God know whether we're going to heaven or hell before we're born?
Yes.
And what's the purpose of life then?
Good question. What is the purpose? To know God. To be in fellowship with Him, to be a follower of His. He knows.
That we're incapable of changing our outcome, right?
This is.
He already knows where we're at.
He knows, all right, but we don't know. And God has given us this call to reach out and share Christ with others. Yes, he knows, because he's all-knowing, he knows. But we don't. We don't fully know. There, there are going to be surprises on the last day, I, I would imagine.
Surprises to us, not to God.
Surprise to us, not surprise to God, surprise to us. It is one of those deep topics, Ronald, that trying to get in the mind of God is impossible for us.
I mean, every time I hear that, you know, God knew your name before we're born and everything above. If he knows all this stuff, well, then what's the purpose of life? We're going to heaven, I mean, you're going to go to heaven, you're going to go to hell, you know, it's all spent and done. So it seems like, you know, why are we here?
Well, we also know that this life is not all there is. So just for this life is not, is not just what it's about. Because we're, we're strangers, we're foreigners here, our home is in heaven. And so while we're here on this earth, it is to, to know God, to have fellowship with God, to make Him known, to go and make disciples, as Jesus said. And in the end, we do what God has called us to do, and He, God's going to do what He does.
So how does this tie in with free will then? Because I think Ronald's point is exactly something many Christians struggle with, or any agnostic struggle with. If it's all decided ahead of time, then free will, I'm just a puppet and I have no control. So why should I bother doing anything? And then how does it tie in with the idea of predestination?
Well, predestination is kind of, kind of the topic we're, we're talking about here. So again, there's a couple, a couple facets to, to that question. Why, I mean, God has given us clearly what the method of salvation is. Faith in the life, death, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. And He has given us clearly the rejection of that is eternal damnation. So someone who says, oh, it's already figured out, well, someone who doesn't believe in Christ, they're going to hell, I mean, that's just how it is. I mean, that's the reality of it. And I'm not sure if I'm answering your question well, right, at the moment, okay?
Yeah, it's, it's one of those questions.
It is, and it's one of those, it is honestly one of those topics where Christians disagree a little bit on what that looks like.
I mean, you try to do missionary work, like, try to save somebody, well, that's already a baked in. It seems like it's, it's already predestined, everything is.
God knows, but again, we don't want to forsake what God has said to us. Go and make disciples, all right? I want to be obedient to Christ. I wanna be obedient to Christ, okay? I wanna be faithful in what He has, you know, you've planted many seeds in your life of faith. Some are received, some are rejected. That doesn't stop God's call for you to keep planting seeds, okay? Shouldn't you just say, oh, well, God's got it figured out, so I'm gonna sit around and do nothing? Well, that completely ignores what God wants us to be doing, to be going and make disciples of all nations. Linda, if you wanna.
I should say, some of those deep, deep thinking things, I think are, like, God's mind is way above ours, so some things we just can't understand on a level that we think, you know, it's beyond us.
It is, it is difficult. I had a professor tell me one time, if you think you understand the doctrine of predestination or election, you don't, okay? I mean, you can, you can read it, but it's hard because it, it kinda, again, like Linda said, God's ways are higher than our ways, His thoughts are higher than our thoughts. So, what He knows and doesn't know is different than what we know, and He hasn't revealed every single thing. He's revealed what He wants us to know in His word, and we seek to follow that the best that we can. Yeah?
On this topic, I think the fact that if everything is predestined or basically existed, it's, it's gonna happen for it to exist, that God knows everything. I think the fact that we're going to heaven or hell and determine our fate for Jesus, and if we know in our heart that He is God who fights sins, I think that can outweigh the outcome of we're gonna go to heaven or hell, and God knows our heart fully too, knows what He is, creates us. I think worrying about little things like that is the devil playing tricks on our mind, causing us to have doubts. That's my thought on it.
And Satan obviously wants us to doubt our salvation regularly, and when he puts those doubts, we go back to what Jesus did. We go back to His promises, we go back to His word. Go back to what He has done for us.
I know that overthinking is my beat, you know, I just, I think about something, oh, I locked that door, did I lock that door? Yeah, I locked that door, I'm pretty sure that door's locked. It's just that doubt, and.
Sure.
It's just, little things like that.
I think it's a little bit too, when you start to think about that, this morning, we talked about, are you saved by faith or your word?
Sure.
Okay? And so, the only answer is like, well, faith, but because of faith, you're gonna produce fruit, okay? And so I think this, this question's a little bit of a thought like that also, because when we do have a free will, that God calls us, He knows all things, He wants all to be saved, it says that in His word.
You know?
Okay? And so then, yeah, we, our job is to know Him more and so to walk in faith with that. Yes, but anyway, that, the idea of faith in our works and our faith, that just kinda struck me too, is that, you know, some people really struggle in understanding that. Because the devil wants us to say, well, hey, sweet, I got, you know, I'm saved by faith, alright, now I don't have to do anything, sweet, okay? And that's kinda like this too, well, I'm already saved, so sweet, I don't have to do anything, I just, you know, or I'm not saved and it's not gonna matter anyway. So, I hope that made any sense.
God knows, God knows in the end, we don't, alright? And I think that's the important thing for us to keep in mind, while God may know, we don't. And as long as He gives us breath, we are to proclaim His word. Alright, any final thoughts? Thank you for Tyler, thank you Tyler for bringing us down that road, alright?
Thanks a lot.
Hey, that's alright, deep conversations about faith are good, for sure. That God makes something so heavy he can't lift it, alright, one of those things. Alright, let's close in prayer. Lord God, thank you for creating everything with a purpose, including us, including our congregation. And Lord, as we go through these next weeks and months, help us to learn more about the purpose that you have for us as a congregation here at St. Peter Lutheran in the community of Dashler, that we may reach out with the good news of Jesus Christ and serve the people that you have placed in this community. Lord, may our plans not be ours, may they be your plans, that we want to follow, that we want to do. So we ask your blessing on this day, blessing on this series, and may we continue to learn more about you and your love for us. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen. Alright, if you, before you leave today, if you would just put your name here, again, just so we know who is here. If you're watching the recording, alright, just let us know that you watched it, that just helps us as we're going through this process, alright? Have a great day.